Are we missing Jack?
Yes.
He's okay. Something came up, he said.
Yeah. Say, because he was in earlier.
He said he was hijacked.
Thing. Yeah.
Ooh. We don't want to ask.
God, what does she want?
Oh, wait, that's, never mind. I was thinking it was somebody else.
This room is going to clear out whenever.
No, not yet. Is it lying? She'll cut that out.
Good evening. We're going to call the meeting to order here at six o'clock. Welcome to the Bath Charter Township Board of Trustees Meeting for Tuesday, September 3rd. Because of the Labor Day holiday, we're on a Tuesday. Happy to see you all and happy to see you all make it through the, sort of the last fits of summer, unfortunately. We'll start with a call to order and then roll call.
Mr. Funes Bliss?
Here.
Ms. Butler-Challander, here. Ms. Wilson?
Here.
Ms. Hagerman?
Here.
Ms. Kellerman?
Here.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Here.
Mr. Phillips will be absent tonight.
Next up on our agenda, and if you're in the audience and you'd like to follow along, there are copies of the agenda up on the lectern. You're welcome to grab. Is the civic reflection. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance and end with a moment of silence, so please rise if you're able and join us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
And now a moment of silence. Thank you. First up for business tonight is the approval of the agenda. I have not heard about any changes from anyone, but of course you're welcome to bring them to the table now, and if not, I would entertain a motion to approve it as it's presented.
I make the motion to approve it as it's presented.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any discussions or questions about the approval of the agenda tonight? Superintendent, you didn't have any changes you needed from us?
No, thank you.
Great. With that, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the agenda as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got an agenda. Next up is disclosures of conflicts of interest. Do any board members need to disclose conflicts of interest for the business tonight? All right, seeing none, we'll move on. Item number five is public statement number one. This is limited to three minutes and it's designated for statements on topics that show up on the agenda today. This is first of two public statement opportunities. For those in the audience that would like to talk about something not on the agenda tonight, you'll have to wait until the end of the meeting and you'll be given an additional three minutes to talk about anything under the sun you want to share with us. Is there anyone who would like to give public statement tonight? All right. Next on the agenda are items for county, state, federal, and other agencies. I don't see anyone in the audience that looks familiar to me. Karen, were you expecting anyone tonight?
I was not. Thank you.
We'll keep moving then. Next up is the consent agenda, which includes minutes of our committees. Because it's the consent agenda, we move without discussion. If someone wants to discuss one of these items, they should ask to remove it from the consent agenda and place it later in the agenda. If that is not the case, I would entertain a motion to approve the consent agenda as provided.
Thanks, I'll move.
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. We'll move right into a voice vote. All those in favor of approving the consent agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. Next up is the approval of minutes. We have one set of minutes from our Board of Trustees meeting August 19th. Are there any changes, discussions, questions, or motions to be made on the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes from Board of Trustees meeting August 19th, 2024, as submitted.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any discussion, questions, concerns about the minutes? Excuse me. All right, we'll do another voice vote. All those in favor of approving the minutes as presented, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we have minutes approved. Next up on our agenda is number nine, approval of vouchers. Does anyone have any questions or comments about the vouchers who would like to put that into a motion form?
I'll make a motion to approve the vouchers as submitted. I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second to approve the vouchers as presented. Is there any other questions or comments about the vouchers tonight? All right, hearing none, we'll take a roll call vote on this one.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
There's no treasurer's report tonight. Our next quarterly investment report will be on October 7th, which used to feel miles away and now feels very in front of us.
We're in September already.
So we'll hear from our treasurer then. We have two committee appointments tonight. We had a resignation from our SCUMA representative from our board. Karen sits as the other member that we've appointed through discussion here in the township hall. We're recommending that we approve Miles, our planner, to sit on that and represent us. Because the sewer is so involved in planning, they're sort of, they're not decoupled. We thought it would be helpful to have someone who's carrying our planning voice into that along with Karen. Are there questions, comments about this appointment? And if none, I would entertain a motion for this appointment.
I just have a question. Miles is okay with this appointment? Okay. I haven't seen him. He's on vacation, so I just want to make sure he was asked. So I'll make the motion to approve Miles to be appointed to the SCUMA Board of Commissioners term ending October 31st, 2027.
I'll support.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion about this appointment? All right, hearing none, we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of the appointment of Miles to the SCUMA Board of Commissioners, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Congratulations, Miles, more work for you. Next up, I'm recommending the appointment of Race O'Connell to the Park Lake Advisory Board, to an open seat we have there. Race has been very engaged in that committee and is still interested in serving on its leadership. This term would end December 31st, 2024, so that's this year. Because of an expired term, we would then re-up him. Should he be interested, and we'd be interested in doing that in December or January. Are there any questions or comments about Race? He was not able to join us tonight, but we all have appointed him prior to the Housing Commission. And if there's no questions or comments, I would love a motion to move forward.
I'll make a motion to appoint Race O'Connell to the Park Lake Advisory Board.
Wonderful.
Second.
All right, we've got a motion in a second. Any other discussion about this appointment? All right, we'll take another voice vote. All those in favor of appointment of Race O'Connell to the Park Lake Advisory Board, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. For those in the audience and those watching at home, we still have many committee appointment opportunities available, and if you want to get involved in your local government, we would love to have you. You can find that application on the website. There's probably, what, six or seven committees that have a vacancy right now?
Correct.
Would love more citizen involvement. Item number 12 is township committee reports. We have none tonight. Item 13, we have unfinished business. Large A is items for introduction and discussion, which also we have none tonight. And item 13, Large B, which we have plenty of tonight, is items for action. So we'll take up Little A first, which is the adoption of the Non-Motorized Pathways and Trails Plan. Miles is here to speak to that. If we have other questions, this is what he presented to us two weeks ago. If you have questions or concerns, we can bring him up to the lectern. If not, I would propose we move forward.
I make a motion to (laugh) the Non-Motorized Pathways and Trails Plan.
Second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Are there any questions or comments before we take a vote? Madam Legal Counsel, as an official plan, I have this down still as a voice vote. Do you see any problem with that?
I do not have a problem with that.
Excellent. All right, then we'll take a voice vote. All those in favor of the adoption of the Non-Motorized Pathways and Trails Plan, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we've got a new plan. Thanks to Miles and the team that put this together, and it'll help guide the township into the future. Next up is the Food Court Lane Service Station Special Use Permit, also presented to us two weeks ago. If you remember, we saw the shingles or the siding or whatever it was that we were also interested in. Again, we can ask Miles to join us if you have questions. Otherwise, I would encourage us to move forward toward a vote. If you notice in the recommendation, there are 15 conditions that our staff are asking to be applied to this. I would recommend to anyone that wants to make a motion that we would include those 15 conditions. How would you like to handle this?
We had talked about the green space at the south end of it last time, and it was in here. They submitted mine. Okay. All right.
Great.
I'll make a motion to accept the Food Court Lane Service Station Special Use Permit with the 15 proposed conditions of approval. If there's 15, I don't remember.
There is. I counted precisely.
Did you?
Because I thought, are there more on this than the ones on Norman? There's none.
There's none.
We have a motion, I heard a second from Al, I think. All right, any other discussion or questions about this special use permit? All right, hearing none, we'll move to a roll call vote.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Thank you.
If there's any way this could be a Speedway, I'd really love that, because I want to use my points.
It's a VP.
I'm just throwing, we've already voted. It doesn't affect the vote. I'm just throwing it out there.
They're VP, sorry.
I'm a Speedway points person.
Not going to happen.
That leads us, it doesn't happen unless you put it out in the ether.
Oh, that's true, yeah.
Next on the list is item C, the Little Bloomers Learning Special Use Permit. Again, we have our planner here to answer any questions, and I think we have the applicant here as well. I do have a question on this one, if you wouldn't mind. Whomever from the family wants to answer. Thank you, gentlemen. Nope, there's the, there's the signing.
There's the signing.
In my head, I had been saying this is a preschool. In the text, I see it's a daycare. Is it either or both? Neither?
So it's a preschool, but it has to be licensed as a daycare.
Got it.
Because it falls under that.
So there will be some learning curriculum part of it?
Yes.
Great. That is the sense I got from you last time.
We just don't have infants and toddlers, so.
That's what I know.
Great. Are there other questions for the applicant or for the planner? All right, if there's none, I believe this has four recommended conditions from our staff. I'd recommend that the motion include that if you're so interested, team. Thank you.
I'll make a motion to recommend approval of the Little Bloomers Learning Special Use Permit and associated conditions.
Great, there's a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any other discussion, questions, or concerns on the Little Bloomers Learning?
Can I ask what a NO box is?
Yeah, it's where we're going to put you, and we want to tell you no.
K-N-O, W, sorry. I should have spelled that.
My mistake.
I think it's supposed to be knox.
They're thinking it's supposed to be knox.
A what?
It's probably a typo, knox. It's the fire marshal's condition.
Okay. That didn't make smart.
They can access the building.
Okay, it's better than no.
That was a good question.
I didn't understand it.
Fire marshal just made a mistake.
No problem. Typing, I got a note there.
Any other questions for Miles, the applicant, or other staff? All right, we have a motion in a second. We'll do another roll call vote, please.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
All right, motion carries. Wonderful. That brings us to item D, the Meadowbrook West Residential Condominium Special Use Permit. Thank you, friends. This is another project that was presented to us by the planner two weeks ago. We've heard it once. We can hear more details if you'd like, ask more questions, or move straight to action if you are so interested. I counted 12 conditions on this special use permit, and I, again, I would recommend any motion to include those conditions.
I just want to point out, maybe we said this last time too, that the adjacent site characteristics listed are not the correct ones.
Yeah.
In here, we mentioned that before. Okay.
Okay.
But other than that, no comments?
Would anyone like to put this into motion?
Question.
Yeah.
I noticed it's only 62 foot, 51 foot, 60 foot wide. Do they have room to get around the buildings? You get a fire truck behind them?
What are you doing? You said no microphone, Miles?
You know, a fire marshal looked at those and they have 150 feet of hose, so that's their threshold for what they consider fire safety, is if they can get the hose all the way around, or not necessarily the vehicle itself from every side of the building. According to them, they.
What about putting porches?
Like if they need built up space for future payos and porches?
Yeah.
Some of those would be tight.
Yeah, wow, yeah. Real tight.
And I mean, that's how the current neighborhood there is too. If the builder was here, I think he would probably say something along the lines of, there's a certain demographic they're playing to. There's some people that like small house on big land, so they can do outdoor things, side-by-sides and whatnot, and there's some people that want as little yard as possible, and I think that's the demographic they're going after.
Okay, seems awful small.
Yeah, those houses are selling for $600,000 a piece right now.
I like these neighborhoods when I'm knocking doors, because you can hit a lot of them very quickly.
Yeah, definitely good for trick-or-treating.
Yes. Miles, are you still trick-or-treating?
I'm not, but.
Perhaps we need to have another conversation.
When me and Cassie have kids, I will be stealing their candy.
Any other questions for Miles or other staff?
Are these detached? Or it says one place condos, and they're both single houses and condos. Oh, they're all single?
Yeah. Sometimes they'll form condo associations, but that's determined by how they want to, their association.
Okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the Meadowbrooks West Residential Condominium Special Use Permit with the conditions listed.
We have a motion. Is there a second?
I'll second.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Any other questions or comments about this project? All right, hearing none, we'll do another roll call vote.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Thank you.
That brings us to the end of our items for action on item E, Anne Drive Small Private Road. This is again something that our planner has shared with us two weeks ago. If you have other questions, we can ask them now, or concerns can be brought up. I read two conditions in this one. Again, would recommend that be part of a motion, should anyone want to move forward.
I move we approve the site with the two extra conditions.
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion in a second. Is there any other questions or concerns about Anne Drive? All right, hearing none, we'll do one more roll call vote.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Ms. Butler-Challander, yes. Mr. Funes Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, that motion carries. Miles, do you ever see a time in the future where we could separate the roads and name one not Anne Drive?
Would the county do that?
You know, that could be determined, they're both of those sections are private.
And two.
So it could be changed by the homeowners along that road tomorrow that came together.
Maybe like Anne with an E and Anne without an E.
And two.
They were very frustrated by it, so I don't know why.
Want a road, want a drive?
And, and two.
Maybe they just don't realize that they have that ability.
Yeah.
I'm sure the pizza delivery person would appreciate it. All right, thank you, folks, for getting through that very efficiently. That brings us to new business. We have several items up for, I think, some healthy discussion tonight. First item is number 14, new business, Large A, items for introduction discussion, Small A, 2025 to 2029 Capital Improvement Plan. I see the planner is here and also the chair of the Planning Commission. So whomever's going to present this, I would invite you to the lectern.
I see it's included in the packet on page 87 of the packet. There were a number of items that were brought for the Planning Commission. The Planning Commission scored these items, so the items include, all of them were brought from the Department of Public Works and Parks. So Wiswasser Park Multi-Sport Court, the Wiswasser Parking Lot, Beach Bathrooms, and then Boat Launch Reconstruction and Kayak Launch. In the previous year, the Boat Launch and the Kayak Launch were scored as two separate projects. This year, that department requested it be scored as one project together. They wanted that for scoring reasons, but also for grant opportunity reasons for those to be coupled. The Planning Commission itself took a little bit of a different approach with the scoring, and you'll see within the report itself on page 11 of the report. And I think that's page 96 of your packet. They did a community score, a department score, and a funding score. One point to note with the funding score is they wanted you guys to know that was their interpretation of likelihood to be funded. If they thought that it would not be funded by the body or have a low, a low interest from you guys, they gave it less of the score if they thought it'd be more applicable to the interests of the township and something that should be funded. Now, that's something we kind of went back and forth with at the Planning Commission, should they even be getting into kind of conceptualizing anything to do with funding? That's not their role. Typically, we go through the prism of land use. I think it's something that we played around with this year because we're testing out different things, and we're thinking about not doing next year. So you could take that for a grain of salt that it is if you want to. That's why we broke out the three different scores though, between community, department, and funding, to give this body a better sense of what that total score that you've gone to pass it, what drives that score. So you can know better where they're coming from. Just to go backwards, yes, the department score is priority that it ranks from the department, and as they were questioning the department head, and what do you think about this project, and how does this, you know, affect the community, and what do you think, what do you think our priority should be, then they would assign it a higher score if it's a higher priority for them, a lower score if it's lower. And then community score was, what's the overall impact of the community? They also had a comment for one of the projects, which was the parking lot project. They felt like DPW could do some of the work themselves and thus lower the overall price that was quoted. Was kind of the synopsis of their comment. You also see in the funding table on page 11, we did a calculator for inflation. So all these projects are projected to be funded and constructed in year 2025, that if they, if it was to move forward. We did projections on what that would do to cost over time if, you know, it gets continually put off, and as you can imagine, it just gets more expensive. So that's basically what that's trying to project and show.
So that's not ongoing costs?
It's not ongoing costs, so I want to note that, I guess, because I could see where that could be implemented. I, again, didn't know the best way to represent that. In terms of scored highest, it was forced the Boat Launch and the Kayak Launch mainly because, I mean, you just can't beat the community impact that that would have. It just scored so high in the matrix that we use at the Planning Commission. However, the department, it is worth noting that the priority for the department was the Wiswasser Parking Lot Project, which was a close, very close second. That project, the department felt like it needs to be a real top priority because of, what is it called?
Well, if the port in place was approved to be done with ARPA funds, and I don't know what the time schedule is for that, but we've discovered that if the drainage is not mitigated, there's probably no use in doing the port in place first. We need to correct the drainage, because otherwise the wash cuts into the playground area and it's going to destroy some of the parking lot, or some of the port in place, I'm sorry. So we felt that at least the drainage issue needed to be addressed. Whether they want to surface the parking lot, and there was a lot of discussion about what was proposed to be done to the parking lot in terms of removing what's there. Was that really a good use of funding? We've got two engineers on the Planning Commission that we had probably 20 minutes of debate about that. So, but we definitely felt that the drainage issue needed to be addressed before the port in place was.
And that's coming from the department as well. So.
So that, I'm sorry, Miles, that sort of jams up the timeline a bit, because those ARPA funds have an end date on them. So that's something we should.
That is correct.
Think about, if we have to do this in front of that.
So I've not had that conversation, which is surprising to me, that nobody's communicated that to me. We are set to move ahead with the port in place in the next couple of weeks.
Yeah, and I don't think that, and Ben would know more than this of me, but I don't think that going to have with the port in place means like the port in place is screwed. It just means, over time, water is going to do its thing. That doesn't mean in year one, it's destroyed. That doesn't mean in year two, it's destroyed. But by year six, it could be eroded, and so it's something that should be addressed sooner than later. And that doesn't mean you have to resurface a whole parking lot and do it with blacktop, but that does mean like what John's saying, at a minimum, you need to think about the drainage impact around that area. So.
Okay.
So basically, it's doing what the CIP is, it's designed to do, it's bringing forth something and suggesting, hey, this is something that needs to be on the radar.
I guess we shifted the funds with the ARPA anyway, so that wouldn't matter. All right.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, for sure. And then just going back on how other things scored, the next one that came in was the multi-score, multi-sport court. I hate saying that. 90, it got a score of 91 out of 155, and then coming in dead last place by like just a ton, as it did last year, was the beach bathrooms. So no one on the Planning Commission is a fan.
No one on the Planning Commission has little children.
Well, I wouldn't say that we weren't fans of beach bathrooms, but we weren't a fan of spending the money, excuse me, on more of an outhouse setup rather than an actual functioning bathroom. I think that was the issue.
Yeah, that was brought up last year too, that we felt that we had to at least explore the cost of building something similar to what Mr. Kessler and Mr. Crock built originally with the bathrooms at Wiswasser Park. Because there is sewer available there by the beach, so the issue would be a well and construction of the bathrooms. For $200,000, we felt that we had to at least be looking at some alternative for an actual bathroom.
So that, that Planning Commission comment section, where it says no, it means no comment, and yes means yes comment? It doesn't mean their comment was no and yes.
And you can go down to the appendix and see what their comments were.
Okay. Al, do you have?
Yeah, I noticed that there's water standing on the one side of the road long enough that it killed the grass. I thought there was a drain that went across at that end of the.
Are you talking about Wiswasser Park?
Wiswasser Park, I'm sorry.
Yeah, Ben would know better. There are some drain systems over there. Water table's obviously been super high this summer. So I think those drains are pretty shallow, and without knowing the specifics and looking at, I would just imagine they're not working super efficiently.
Well, they have in the past.
They have worked in the past.
Maybe one got plugged or something.
A pretty wet summer. We don't typically have standing, like that, the wetland area in summer season is dry this time of year. To the point where the soil is cracking, it's completely resaturated, it's got two feet of standing water.
Yeah.
So it's been a kind of wild summer. I've had them all twice a week.
I like that that's your definition of a wild summer.
Being a new homeowner, just that way.
It's not, it's not, it's not fun.
All right, anything else we should know about the plan?
I think that's the synopsis of it.
Superintendent, did you want to draw any attention to the non-discretionary projects? I printed it too small. Page ninety-five.
So the items that are listed are, are items that have been on here for quite some time on the past plans. They are kind of a rolling plan with equipment and infrastructure vehicles. So we address those as needed most of the time. There are, as I'll get to in just a moment, there are two vehicles being replaced by the police department for police cruisers. And of course, the finance committee is working on the fire trucks at this time. So as they come up, if the funding is more complex, obviously, that comes to this board and the finance committee. And if there are items that can be included in budgeting, we, we do so.
Any questions for any of the folks? I was surprised to see nothing from the senior center in here. Were they not interested? Were they like, we've asked you guys enough, we're not going to ask again, or?
I can't say that I've had a conversation with any of them. They were aware. I believe that Ms. Gardi, the chair of that committee, is engaged in the process. And I, I cannot offer a reason as to why they didn't, because I didn't have that conversation. But I'm guessing that it may be for the reasons that you just stated.
Okay.
I would add that reviewing the minutes of the senior center's board, it sounded to me like they were going to be exploring additional options for funding of various activities. So perhaps that's something they're exploring as well.
Okay. So our role here, Karen, is to accept receipt of this, is that right?
Correct.
All right. And receipt does not mean that we are guaranteeing these projects will be done or that funding will be available, but that we have heard from the planning commission and appreciate their thoughts into this.
Yes.
And then you, as our chief staff member, would use what you can in your budget. Fill it out, that is also in front of us.
That is correct.
All right. So that is the synopsis of the CIP process. Would someone like to make a motion to accept receipt of the plan?
Not just for discussion.
All right.
Just for discussion.
We'll do it next to.
Okay.
I was ready to go. All right, I won't pull that on the next one.
Yeah, please. Thanks, guys.
Man, we're a real crowd killer tonight.
We are. It's okay.
Karen, we're at small B, twenty twenty-five budget recommendation. As I just mentioned, it's in front of us.
Yes. So in front of you, you have a larger paper that contains the draft budget recommendation from my, me and my office. You also have with that a memo that I will go through with you briefly to give you an overview of the budget. I have to make the comment that I was extremely heavy-handed this year, having some conversations with the supervisor. We feel it is appropriate in this election year to embark on some strategic planning after the election is over for this board. It's, it's my recollection that we have not had any strategic planning since Paula Clark was our supervisor and Dan Lettich was our superintendent. And I believe that was prior to or the year of twenty sixteen. So it's been quite some time since we've, we've embarked on that planning process, which I think is critical for this township. I think it will guide my decision-making as to how funds are spent and what the priorities of this board are. And so I think it is critical that we, we do that when the election is over and the, and whatever new members of the board are seated, or possibly the members that currently sit here. So with that, I will note the first item of revenue sharing is not significant, but I, I generally think this will be a trend that we'll see over the coming years. Revenue sharing from the state of Michigan has decreased by twenty-one thousand six hundred and fifty-eight dollars, or one point five percent. We still have a healthy amount that we receive from the state, so I don't want to minimize it. But I do anticipate that it'll continue to go down over time.
Which number are you on?
I'm in the memo.
Oh, thank you.
I'm sorry, the first item was just the general fund revenue, revenue sharing.
Is that just a result of how the state structures their own budget?
I would offer, I don't know if Legal has anything to offer in addition. I was at the Michigan Townships Association when they tried to get rid of completely revenue sharing. So from my background that I've had experience over time, that seems to be an item that, you know, is very expensive. Many townships, cities, and villages receive that money. And I think it's, it's burdensome for the state, but that is a large part of how we, in addition to our villages, fund our, our operations and services. So I do think it'll continue to decline.
The item in the budget went up, though.
The state of Michigan budget?
No, state budget. Not our budget.
That, that may be possible, but we saw a twenty-one thousand dollar, over twenty-one thousand dollar reduction.
I think that the item in the state of Michigan budget increased to fund smaller, non-charter-type townships that wouldn't impact us.
Yeah, I can look into that if you would.
Maybe I missed.
No, I do think that was added this year, but it shouldn't come at a lost us either.
The way they're allocating it, they're changing it?
Yeah, but they increased it so that they could add more units to it.
I can look into that further.
Yeah, maybe we could call the MTA governor, government relations person? Because that sucks.
Yeah, that's half a sport court.
That's right.
Moving to the general fund expenditures, I, with the cuts that I made from the requests received from department heads, cut over one point six million dollars in spending. Later on in the memo, I have included those items that I did not fund. That is totally up to this board and possibly the finance committee, looking at the next action on your agenda, to include those if you feel differently for us to have those conversations. I felt, though, there were items that had little impact at this time on the, the public-facing services and amenities that we offer. That's not to say that some of them wouldn't, such as the Whiswasser park, parking lot reconstruction. I'm sorry, stumbling over that. Of course, would have an impact on people, but, but more on the amenities of the park itself. So I did not include that. Part of that overall cut was the, with the police and fire, public safety millage passing, the expenditure transferring out of the general fund to the public safety fund is less this year. It's approximately six hundred and fifty thousand. And in previous years, it was over one point five million dollars. That's the amount we have budgeted this year. So it cut that general fund expenditure by half approximately.
I know we're hearing the audit presentation soon, but can you give us like a high level, how much we took or put back into the fund balance from general fund?
I have not looked at that. At this time, there's approximately thirty thousand dollars in the fund. But I don't have the number with me that we're adding to that as a result of the financials from twenty twenty-three.
What do you mean there's thirty thousand dollars?
So it, it could be, just wasn't expended at this time, but the general.
It should have like three million dollars in it.
No, you're talking about two different things.
I'm asking about the general fund fund balance.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm speaking to the, to the public safety fund balance.
No, I'm sorry, general fund fund.
No, I can't, I don't, I didn't bring that with me, so I, I can't speak to that at this time. I could also bring that forward. I mean, it'll be on our next agenda for presentation, so also it will be available then. My apologies for not having that information.
That's okay.
So of course, the, I've listed, this is something I normally don't do, but I have done for you at this time is to list the general fund departments to show you the twenty twenty-four adopted budget versus the twenty twenty-five recommended budget. At this time, four are higher than last year, sometimes only by a couple of thousand dollars. And then three of them are the same at this time. And those tend to be some lower amounts, such as legal services and social services, as well as the border review have, or I'm sorry, engineering have, have remained the same. Again, if you turn to page two, the difference of those budgeting years is approximately one point six, almost one point seven million dollars. There still are operating transfers to public safety of six hundred and fifty thousand dollars and then to the senior center of a hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars approximately. So those are the two biggest transfers out of the general fund. As far as staffing is concerned, I worked with several assumptions throughout the process of developing the budget. Some employees received a three percent increase in wages. And then some others received an adjustment based on a wage compensation and classification study that was completed recently by DeWitt Charter Township. It was a very valuable document in helping us understand where some of our salaries and pay scales fare out in terms of how other communities are paying. So some of those were adjusted and as we go through that budget, depending on how you want to go through that budget, those can be pointed out. I calculated benefits with an increase of thirteen percent. Last year, I generally budget based on a ten percent increase. Last year's was thirteen point nine, so I went with a number that I thought might be more in line with what the increases we might be seeing.
And we get that actual number in the budget process, right?
October. It's usually available to us in the first or second week of October. In addition, I noted for all of you that the township's MERS plan is expected to increase to twenty-six point two-two percent. That is the amount that township employees contribute to the plan. The township, its contribution is currently capped at eleven percent. As you know, the finance committee is currently working to address the issues that were, that are occurring in our MERS plan. We held an all-employee meeting last week. And it is something that the finance committee will continue to work on as we move through the rest of the year.
That increases to, right, not from?
Correct, it's a, yes. It's currently twenty-four, approximately twenty-four percent. And as you know, the township is currently picking up the difference between the nineteen point six-six percent and that twenty-four percent. Another factor that is taken into consideration is there are currently no elections scheduled for twenty twenty-five. So that changes our expenditures greatly from a presidential year to a year where we may have no elections. School issues may come before us, but we won't know that until potentially early next year. Special projects, I've listed as strategic planning by the Board of Trustees. That is the only special project that I considered for this year. That will come before you as we work through the budget and, and make decisions about what we're going to do. That will come back to you for more discussion and decision-making.
That means that cost is built in here?
Yes.
Okay. Which department is that in?
It's in the township board, contractual and professional. Maintenance, repairs, and improvements. I did take into consideration that we have gotten a lot of our facilities and parks and different properties to a very good spot, and I want to continue doing that repair and maintenance work. So the ones that will continue at this time are the Park Lake Weed Treatment and Geese Deterrent Program. Park Lake Nature Trail is listed here. I did not include money because I'm waiting for the Board of Trustees to make a decision on that at a later date. Township parking lot crack ceiling, playground equipment for Whiswasser Park, fishing dock, swimming buoys, ropes, and sand for the beach, mulch and plants also for the beach. There is a trash can and a concrete pad planned for the soccer field. The upgrade of irrigation, the irrigation control system at the soccer park. There has been a request to update the police squad room furniture layout and conference table. And then there is also cemetery tree trimming, driveway maintenance, and landscaping. In addition, those I have included for vehicles and equipment purchases include lawn mower replacement for DPW. The police department has a request in for two new patrol vehicles with a changeover, including a changeover labor and materials. And then some miscellaneous items requested by DPW, including chainsaw, fertilizer spreader, spring trimmers, or, excuse me, string trimmers, leaf blowers. And the last items are from police and fire, include radios, body cams, police rifles, riot squad gear. And then for fire, they have some new software that they're implementing and would like to continue. And I have included those as first-arrive software, fire active nine-one-one, portable radio replacement, and then repairs are included for fire rescue six-one and engine six-four. Barring a decision by the finance committee in this body to replace those vehicles, they will need repairs next year. Large-scale infrastructure projects that are on our list and need to continue with planning include Webster Road corridor project. At the last meeting, I informed you that that will not be undertaken this year as it was planned, but will occur next year. So that will come out of twenty twenty-five. We continue our planning for Chandler Road, the corridor project, which includes the drain, dealing with drain issues, the road, and some non-motorized pathways. We will embark on some sewer lining and manhole repair. And the SCUMA facility improvement project continues at this time and will throughout the next year or so. And we know our, our payments are basically worked into our sewer monthly payment to SCUMA. So those are covered there. The items that I have not funded, listed at the very end of this memo, for approximately five hundred and twenty-two thousand dollars, in ordinance compliance slash fire truck vehicle, or fire department vehicle, for approximately sixty thousand dollars. Siding and some repairs at the community center. The replacement of a furnace and air conditioning unit. I feel that if we encounter some issues next year with those systems, those items could be brought to this board for a budget amendment. So I'd rather wait until they're an issue.
That's a furnace AC here?
I don't know which building it's at, but we have been replacing them over time. So there's been a kind of an ongoing maintenance schedule to replace them. Sometimes it's worked in because we anticipate with the age they are, some of them are, are edging towards twenty years old. We know that when they go, they'll, they'll go usually at an inopportune time and need to be replaced. So. In addition, Whiswasser parking lot reconstruction, which we just discussed, for a hundred and fifty-four thousand dollars. Rapsin Road gravel parking lot at eight grand, some picnic tables. This next one was difficult to work through. The fire department has requested two additional full-time employees. I think it would be prudent at this time for us to also embark, which not, is not built on, into the budget yet this year, but could be an assessment of our police and fire departments to see if they're on par with this growing community and whether or not we are right-sized to face those needs. So I would like to, before we move ahead with hiring more full-time employees, make sure that that would be the right move for this township. And then, of course, the engine replacement for the fire department. I'm not sure that that number is correct. It might have been the amount for this year that they wanted to put aside, but I also did not.
I think that's what's in the capital improvement plan that we just looked at.
Did not fund that, yeah. So those were not included in the budget.
So everything else that's listed here was included unless it explicitly says was not included? Okay. Let's hope, thank you.
Yes, you're correct. And like I said, those items, through discussion, if, if this moves to finance committee or if this body decides to move ahead with a, a full board discussion on the budget, those are certainly up for debate and discussion and a different decision to be made by this board.
Questions for superintendent? Are you going to move into this?
I'm not. I wanted to do kind of a thirty thousand-foot view. I would encourage members to take a look and not. I would encourage members to take a look and not, I would encourage you not to get frustrated if you see something's not funded. It's all up for discussion and input, depending on this, how this board chooses to move forward with its process. It is definitely, input is welcome, questions are welcome, and if you make a different decision than I do, that is certainly your prerogative, so I, my recommendation is just that. It's a recommendation to you. I felt it was important this year to really scale a lot of things back and give this board time to do that strategic planning and make some critical decisions about how you want to fund some of these departments and services moving forward.
So, in this budget, you've rolled back the five-ish percent that the township has been putting in to bring folks up to the 24-ish percent for retirement that they are now?
I've rolled back.
Yeah. You didn't include?
I included it at the current level, that the township's currently funding it at 11%.
Aren't we funding it more than 11%?
Correct, but that's in the 2024 budget. That's not the, this is, since this is the 2025 budget, I went back to the 11% that the township-
That's what I meant. So you went back to last year's?
Correct.
Got it.
I'm sorry, I misunderstood your question.
Okay, that's helpful.
So anything that the, the finance committee and ultimately this board decides to do will be, there's still time to factor that into the budget.
I think it's very telling that you eliminated one point, basically seven million dollars over 2024, but yet we're still pulling out 650,000 from the savings plan, sort of the fund balance that we have. It's dramatic in like lots of ways.
Yeah.
All right, do you want to talk about the recommendation two, or is that the next item on the agenda?
It's the next one.
Do folks have other questions about the budget, sort of the process? There's a proposal here that is on the agenda next. Are we okay to move into that phase? I don't want to rush folks, I know this is really important.
We have the DDA next, right?
No, the referral of this to the finance committee or the process we want to take to refer, or excuse me, to review the budget. Are we okay to move into that? I don't see anybody saying no, so I'm gonna move into that. All right. So that brings us to new business, large B, small A, referring the 2025 budget to the finance committee. There's a memo, and I almost said invoice. Memo in the packet, and the treasurer's gonna talk about it. You talk now.
Hey, if you want me to. We have discussed in the past sending the budget back to the finance committee. That's how it was done back in '24, '25, and '26. Or we can keep it as we've done it in the past, so I guess it's up to everybody here, how they would like it run.
You mean '14, '15, '16?
Yeah, sorry, '14, '15 is, no, well, no, it was, in '14 you started it for '15's budget.
You said '24, '25.
Oh, sorry, oh, did I? I'm sorry, I have it written right, I just said it wrong.
I knew what you meant. I just wanted to clarify for folks.
Misspeak, yeah, so.
So having been on the board at that time, we found it very helpful. The finance committee took an initial look, did a back-and-forth with the superintendent, and then brought it to the full board for discussion, any changes in passing. It saved the board a lot of time and meaning, but still gives us as a full board purview. The finance committee can't pass things without us passing them. So what would come to us, this is the superintendent's recommendation, what would come to this board is the finance committee's budget recommendation for discussion and changes. So that is what the treasurer, on behalf of the finance committee, is proposing we do again. Because there's a truncated timeframe, it talks about time, right?
Yeah, we would like to do it before the new board is set, November 20th.
Yeah, so the finance committee would work pretty quickly to bring it back so that we all could take a vote before the switch over in the board. I personally think it's unfair to bring somebody on and five minutes later say, "Make a $5 million decision here," without having any of the content. It's just a lot to come up on, especially those of you who are added late in the game on the board, you know that. I know other boards have chosen to do other things, but that would be my recommendation, that we move it forward so that a new board comes in and the budget is in place. The new board can always change the budget and anything they want at any time, once they've sort of gotten their arms around it.
Or we could just do how we've done in the past, where we set all these special meetings, and Karen goes line by line and-
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
I've got to read a bell ring.
I'm normally better than that. I was deep in the thought.
I think the board should be the one that, you, we've waited quite a while for recommendations from you, from the finance committee on fire truck, and you guys have got a lot of work to do. And I think that it's worked out very well with us going page to page the last eight years, and I think we should keep on doing it that way.
Okay.
If we have our normal time, it shouldn't take only a couple, three meetings.
You always say that, Al, and then it takes six meetings.
That was, that was a different situation.
Okay, fair.
Can I ask how many meetings, do we remember how many meetings it took us last year? I think it was, no, I thought it was pretty good.
Actually, I think by the time we went through it page by page, I didn't go line by line, I generally navigated through it, changes in each department, significant changes in each department, and explained it that way. I do think it took less time, but I, I think Al's correct. It usually takes a, a meeting to go through 15 to 20 pages, and that with a budget that's got 42 to 45 pages at this time, it would probably take at least three meetings to get through it. I would also point out that we generally, that this board has not done it yet, but this board generally cancels the meeting before the November election, so we are working in a deficit of not having that meeting to, to work through the budget. But obviously, you could call special meetings in addition to our regularly scheduled meetings.
The challenge that I have had in walking through it line by line, page by page, is where one board member wants a change, there's this awkwardness of like, Karen, are you now empowered to make that change, or do we have that discussion at the table? I don't necessarily know how to solve that, but that seems to be an issue.
I think at one point, we did some voice votes called by me, just to get consensus on a, a department or a, a fund. That, in my opinion, worked well, because then you know if you have two, three, four members, or if you have just one person wanting a change.
Yeah, that's a good practice. We did that when I was on the board the first time as well, and it, it just helps give direction to the staff. All right, that's still, do other people have feelings about referring to the finance committee, keeping it at these meetings? Now is the time to voice that?
I would like to keep them at the meetings here.
Okay.
I think it's better that everybody has a voice in it. Now, if we did it to the finance committee, maybe if we had like one meeting and then brought them back to this meeting, like in the middle of September, I don't know how much time we have. I don't think that we, as a finance committee, should make the changes or the ideas and bring it back to one meeting of the Board of Trustees. Does that make sense?
You're saying there would be like an additional work meeting before we would-
I think we should be pretty equal. I think if we're gonna do it at the finance committee, we should have two finance committee meetings and maybe two board of trustee meetings. I want it to be equal so that everybody has their voice and what they're thinking. Unless you guys think I should just go to the finance committee?
How are you feeling, Sheri?
Input from everybody, this functional, I don't know, which is the best.
Yeah, I, I feel your pain over there. Neither of them are bad or wrong, but it is how we want to handle it. Kay, how are you feeling?
I mean, I just kind of came in at the tail end of the process last year, but I think Brenda's suggestion feels reasonable, balanced, where the finance committee can do some of the deep-digging, dirty work, but the Board of Trustees still has ample opportunity to weigh in on it.
Yeah, that does seem fair.
Instead of one, it kind of extreme or the other, maybe try and balance it, and then again, next year, we could, or the board could decide something different if they didn't like that.
Yeah, and at the end of the day, if, if things really went south in terms of coming to agreement, we do have a lot of time at the end of the year we could work through, but it would be the new board. So that is sort of the fallback that, I can't imagine we would not be able to pull it off, but in case something happened that we weren't, it's not like we would run up against the actual deadline, it's sort of a self-imposed deadline. Would you like to put your recommendation into a motion for?
Well, let me make sure. So we have, we are looking to have this vote done by the end of October?
November.
November.
No, for the, okay, I thought you wanted it before-
December.
You have one meeting, I believe it's on the 18th.
Correct.
So that would be the last meeting available for this body to approve it.
That would, yeah, I mean, what you're saying is right. We'd have to have it done by October in order for us to vote on it in November, because we'd be canceling the November, the first November meeting.
Unless we, we had a special, I don't have enough time to have a special meeting with the election going on.
So if we did like two and two to your suggestion, it would be like the finance committee probably should do two meetings in September, and then the full board, two meetings in October. Right? And then that would leave us with the one?
Yeah, because then I could post, the requirement of posting in a newspaper could be posted for the meeting on the 18th.
Yeah. Al?
I would like to have our committee, our people from the community here when we're doing it. I think when you start going and having a committee and going behind closed doors so that it isn't open for the, the public, it gives us a bad reputation.
We could open the meetings to the public.
The finance committee meetings?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I think, I hear exactly what you're saying, that we haven't traditionally, this, with this finance committee, first finance committee I was on, we met here in public each time.
I think it's because we set the, this finance committee up differently than we-
Yes.
Than they were in the past, that's why.
Yeah. Yeah, so I, I like that idea, Al, that folks would have the ability to come and we would tell, tell them. It keeps us focused and-
Yes.
On the upfront. Would you like to put that in a motion?
Well.
Could you combine all those pieces into a motion?
I'll make a motion to have the finance committee hold two meetings in September on the budget and bring their ideas back, more professionally, to the Board of Trustees in October, and then have the, I'm slaughtering this.
Oh, you're, you're hitting all the highlights.
Then in November, we'll have the vote.
And in October, have two meetings of the full board.
Yep, and then in November, on November 18th, I think it was, have the, the full vote.
With those two finance committee meetings being publicly posted?
Yes.
Does that capture everyone's feelings in there?
Does that work?
All right, we've got a motion, a Frankenstein motion we put together. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
All right, we have a motion, a second. Any other questions, thoughts about this? I would also encourage the other board members, as you personally work through it, nothing would prevent you from telling the board members that are on the finance committee your thoughts, questions to ask. You should still be engaging with Karen, so I don't want you all to think you should be doing nothing at this point.
And we can still attend as a member of the public, right?
Yes.
Yes.
Just can't sit at the table.
And please don't speak. I don't know, that sounds interesting, but if you speak, then it becomes a quorum of this body. So you can attend, you can share your communications to the superintendent. It even gets a little difficult if those communications are going directly to the finance committee, because presumably that would be presented as, well, trustee Kellerman mentioned X, and now we're, we're sort of in an interesting spot. So probably best for communications in advance of the full board meeting again on the subject to come to the superintendent, who can simply voice, this is some of the feedback I have heard.
That's helpful. All right, any other discussion about that?
I do have a question. Will we have the board of trustee meetings like an hour before our regular meetings, or will we have, I'm asking too many questions.
No, that's a good question.
In October.
In October.
In October.
Yep, should we, would an hour give us enough time, or should we do it a couple hours before the regular meeting, or do different days?
I think we did it an hour before, didn't we?
Yeah.
I think an hour before each meeting.
We have two meetings though, would that be enough?
Yeah, I think so.
I think it was enough last year. I went through my calendar, I think you did it in two meetings, and then you had your, your public hearing on the third, the third meeting.
Yeah, I could do that. Would other folks be available for the two October meetings?
I don't even have my thing, but I'm sure I will.
I think it's helpful if we get the plan together now.
So we'll do them between six and-
We're talking-
Five to six.
October 7 and 21 is what we're looking at.
So, board meetings will start at five, from five to six, it's just budget, okay.
So those will be special meetings?
Yeah.
Okay. And then we'll get together later on the time of the finance-
Yep, we'll get those booked.
Yeah, let's do that ASAP.
I'll send your schedule an email?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah. She's gonna hate me. All right, so we've got a motion, a second, I think we've got a good feel of the plan. Any other questions, thoughts? This'll be a good test run to see if this works for the future.
I, if I can, I would offer, if any board member wanted to come and meet with me to get more in-depth information on the proposal, the recommendation that's before you, I'm certainly willing to do that, and I can meet outside of regular business hours for those that still work. So I am available for a, a meeting to go over it, or to take feedback and suggestions, comments, questions.
That's helpful, thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
All right, are we ready for a vote? So to clarify, the motion is to refer the budget to the finance committee for two public open meetings in September, of which point the finance committee will refer the recommendation back to the full board for two board meetings in October, where we will meet an hour before the board, normal start time, to work through the budget, all with the idea of voting on the budget at the one and only meeting that is likely to happen in November, prior to the election, well, after the election, but prior to the new board.
So the public hearing.
What was that, November 18th, you said?
Yeah. Everyone feel okay about that? All right. I think we can do that by voice vote? All right, so let's take a voice vote. All those in favor of the motion, as I've just laid it out, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. All right, I think our last item of business is DDA property taxes with the superintendent.
Thank you. This is the last time that this banner should come before you to pay the property taxes on the DDA property. As you know, we own a vacant lot that was, was transferred to us from the DDA, and it's now in the township's name. At the time that the property was still in, the town, it's still in the DDA's ownership of December 31st, 2023, when the tax bill came out, we still owe that amount for 12604, and I'm asking for you to authorize that expenditure from the DDA fund for payment of the 2024 summer property taxes. I'm leaving straight up.
Questions about that? All right, does someone want to put that into a motion?
Make a motion to authorize expenditure from the DDA fund for the property taxes for 2024, for the parcel 1-0, I'm sorry- for the parcel one zero, I'm sorry, zero one zero one hundred dash zero two zero dash zero one zero dash zero one on Main Street.
Hang on a sec, could you say that again?
Sure, it's right there.
I'll support it.
All right, we have a motion and we have a second. Is there other discussion about the DDA property or its taxes?
The quick claim deed has been done, correct?
It has, it's been recorded with the county, and we have received the paperwork back from the county, it's official. So this is back, will be the last time we ask for this.
Yay.
All right.
We'll have a follow one, two, won't we?
Nope, that.
We won't, this will be the last one, in the middle of the year?
Yep.
Why is this?
So the taxes are due September?
Sixteenth.
Sixteenth?
Next week, guys, pay your taxes.
That is for whatever property, where it was at December thirty-first of two thousand twenty-three.
Okay.
All right, I think we should do a roll call vote on this one?
Yep, Ms. Butler, challenge it, yes. Mr. Fuenz Bliss?
Yes.
Ms. Wilson?
Yes.
Ms. Kellerman?
Yes.
Ms. Hagerman?
Yes.
Mr. Rosecrans?
Yes.
Thank you.
All right, Madam Superintendent, you are up with the report.
Thank you. This office is extremely busy. As we just indicated, we are in the busy time of collecting tax payments. A sewer bill will be going out very soon, so the front office is extremely busy. As you know, of course, the November election will make it even more busy. So we will be kicking into election mode, I would suspect sometime mid-September, moving towards October, before the general election. We encourage people to, as much as there have been a lot of new mandates from the state in terms of elections, I think our staff has done a tremendous job of where you're supposed to clerk, to implement those and to make voting as accessible as possible for our public. There's been, I think, a little bit of confusion. People are now being asked to be on a permanent voter list, and it's a little different than what some of them are used to, but they are bringing in their forms and they're responding to that very well. Sometimes they have questions, but our staff is doing a tremendous job of explaining all the changes to them. And most of the time, by the time the conversation's done, they're happy and they're filling out their forms, so we're very pleased. Of course, budget season is a busy time for my office, in addition to just a lot of other general activities that are taking place. There are, of course, a lot of development meetings, pre-application meetings with the planning staff and the assessor. So a lot of that work you saw before you two weeks ago and tonight, and that will continue with the planning commission for the work you do to get us ready for those items that come before us. We have a tremendous planning commission. Thank you, Mr. Chair, for the work you do. It's, it's very important, and I think you're seeing kind of a rebirth of path in some of the developments that are now coming to us, especially the business developments and the housing, which of course is much needed. I'm not prepared at this time to give you a breakdown of department activities. I think what I'll do for you as we move into September, we will be moving into budget amendment season. We're required to do budget amendments every month, September, October, November, December. We will embark on that process. The budget still is in somewhat of a flux as a result of benefits, fuel costs, MERS. So of course we'll continue to work through those issues and bring those to the board as needed for your input and your decision-making. But we will, we will be embarking on that. In addition to, so you're kind of closing out the twenty twenty-four budget, which seems silly because you're still in the thick of it, but you will be working on the twenty twenty-five budget, of course, as well. So I look forward to this. I look forward to strategic planning by this body. I think it's desperately needed for our staff to be able to make good decisions on your behalf, to know what you think and you think is important and needs to be moved forward. So we're just kind of working through the process and are willing to come to the table with you to make the decisions. So whatever is needed, of course, ask. And I think at this time, that's all I have. But if you have questions, I'm certainly open to answering those for you.
Questions?
Our house on Park Lake Road.
So. I don't know that I have the latest, so I won't defer. Unfortunately, we had to go to court to have the transfer of ownership delivered to us. That is complete. We are in the process of paying for that. We need to transfer the funds to the Clinton County Court and then pay the realtor that represented us throughout that process. And I believe the time has passed for the previous owner to vacate the premises. I'm trying to be very careful. So it, it is moving forward, it will be ours very soon. And I think the takeaway is probably it's, if it, if it is the VPW's intention to demolish that structure, we will most likely have to budget, build that into budget for twenty twenty-five. I think the time is probably, with everything going on at this point, it's probably too much to accomplish that this year.
Can't we just take sledgehammers down there?
Hey, stress relief.
That's how we'll work through the budget process.
Give the right permits.
You're gonna say, make sure you get the right house. Yeah.
That tree couldn't take it down.
And certainly delaying that project a bit is also prudent, given that there are still processes that could be pursued at this time. So, I have not seen that happen yet. It was as much as I knew I was worried there was more than that. So, and I'm aware that there were some challenges in the lead-up to the time to vacate the property. I think those are since quieted, so we're gonna keep our eyes on the process to make sure that we're moving along appropriately. Good question, no, thank you.
Anything else folks want to know? All right, thank you, Madam Superintendent. That brings us to public statement two. Our public has really winnowed here. This is a time for folks to come and speak to the board about any topic they'd like for up to three minutes. Is there anybody in the public who'd like to speak? Our one public says no. All right, that'll bring us to board member comments, and Sheri, I think you're up first this time.
Nothing to add, thank you for quick meeting, very efficient. Just please pay your property taxes, they're due on the sixteenth, which is Monday.
Thanks to the crew who.
It's a week from Monday.
A week from Monday.
Well, they got a week.
And that caused people in a panic.
Oh, we've had people, we had people today saying they were due today, so.
It's better than delay, right? Thanks to the folks who turned out, they trickled out over time, but it was helpful to have them here. I will be out of town for work next meeting, so I have asked Jack to take the supervisor seat. You all get to actually choose that, but I want you to know as a former supervisor, I thought he would do a good job, and he is willing to do that. Should you want to put him in that role, someone will need to do that at the beginning of the meeting. I will try to watch you live, but I won't be able to be here, I will be in a different state. And contrary to what you read on Facebook, we do not cancel meetings because I'm working in a different place. So, we're gonna keep the meeting. That's it for me.
I just want to let everybody know, probably about two weeks ago, I sent out about, almost sixteen hundred absentee voter applications. Those are people that are not on the permanent application list. So if you want to get the application back as soon as possible, we probably will be sending out the ballots the last week of the month. I mean, we're already deep into election mode, and so, that's it.
I have nothing.
I don't think I have anything.
All right, that brings us to the end, thank you, board members. We'll look for a motion to adjourn?
I move adjourn.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second, any discussion? Hearing none, we'll take a voice vote, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, we stand adjourned. I'm on the permanent list, right?
I can look.
I also am a little confused, the words are like so alike. They should have come up with like new language.